Pray with me. Heavenly Father, we come before you with grateful hearts today, grateful for the opportunity to be here, grateful for this, the comfort and safety that we have to be here tonight. We pray your blessings on those in the western part of our state that are much, much for less fortunate than we are. And Father, we pray for blessings on those that have turned out as, as true people of Person County that we know in such a way in responding to the needs of the people during this horrific period of time in, in their lives. Bless each one that, that is serving there, each one that has contributed to recovery efforts and be with them all. Ask your presence and guidance in all that we do here tonight, that their decisions will be right and best for Person County. And we pray in your holy name, amen.
We will stand, we will, if we can, salute our flag and repeat the pledge of allegiance to thee.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
First on our agenda is discussion, adjustment, and approval of the agenda as presented. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Have a motion for approval in a discussion. Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carried. Item number one on the agenda is a proclamation recognized in October as domestic violence awareness and prevention month of Vice Chairman Sims.
Thank you, Chairman. At this time, I would like to ask Geraldine Faulkner if she would, she is with the Safe Haven of Person County to speak just for a few minutes to us.
Good afternoon.
Good morning.
I would like to thank the commissioners for having us here, Safe Haven. I am the shelter manager for Person County Safe Haven, and what we do, we provide advocacy for referrals, for counseling. We help them find clothes, food, shelter, and we also believe that everyone should be violence-free and afraid of violence. I've been with Safe Haven six and a half years now, and we work hard, very hard, to make sure everyone is safe and have found housing for people, people that couldn't even speak English, got them jobs, got them up on their feet, and got them started. Safe Haven is very important to us, and we hope that Person County recognize that we do a lot of good work here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll read the proclamation if I can, Chairman.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Out of the floor.
Proclamation, Domestic Violence Awareness Prevention Month, October 2024. Whereas domestic violence awareness and prevention month is observed each October, providing an opportunity to raise awareness about domestic violence, promote prevention efforts, and support survivors of this devastating but common issue. And whereas the impacts of domestic violence are not confined to any group or groups of people, but cross all economic, age, racial, and societal barriers, and are often supported by silence or societal indifference here in Person County and across the United States. Whereas domestic violence can take the form of physical, emotional, sexual, sociological, economic abuse. Whereas historically undeserved populations face some of the highest rates of domestic violence, along with additional barriers to safety and support. Whereas research shows that by creating communities where people are connected, supportive, and careful one another can reduce incidence of domestic violence. And whereas every day in Person County, individuals and organizations play a part in supporting people impacted by domestic violence, providing services including therapeutic, legal, educational, housing advocacy, advocacy and medical services. Whereas we recognize that by coming together as a community, we can raise awareness, challenge harmful attitudes and behaviors, and work towards preventing domestic violence in all forms. Now, therefore, in recognition of domestic violence awareness and prevention, the Person County Board of Commissions does hereby proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness and Prevention Month, and urges all residents to become involved in efforts to prevent and respond to domestic violence and recognize the impact of domestic violence in our community. Adopted this day, seventh day of October 2024.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve proclamation recognized in October as Domestic Violence and Awareness Prevention Month?
So move.
Have a motion on the floor, any discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carried. Item number two on our agenda is public hearing, consideration of approval of Sixth Amendment T A O one two four to adopt the Person County Unified Development Ordinance, which we refer to as U D O. Manager Kathy, we, let's go with a motion to open the public hearing first here.
So move.
Have a motion on the floor, any discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried, and now it's Kathy.
Thank you. I T., will you please lead the presentation for us? Thank you very much. Okay, good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. I will present to you tonight a summary of our Unified Development Ordinance. I am doing this in the absence of a planning director. Chris did give this presentation at the last meeting, so I am going to briefly share some of the highlights with you again tonight as we open the public hearing. He is no longer here with the county, so as our resident expert, he did leave this in our hands to continue it forward. In the audience, we do have our Planning Board Chair, Barry Walker. I see Tabitha George, who is also a member of the Planning Board here. And then Mickey Brandon, who's our planning technician, has been with the department for the past year as they walked through the process. So I hope I didn't miss any other of those key members who have been involved in this process for well over a year, but they are here and may be able to respond if there are some specific questions that I may not be able to answer. To get us started, the U D O is, the general intent behind that is to bring together our land use ordinances into one document that is more user-friendly and understandable. So we've pulled together ten separate ordinances into one document, and I'll go through, through what each one of those are. This is an effort to make the permitting process more predictable, efficient, and easier to issue permits. So we have one place that everybody can go to understand what the rules and regulations are at the local level that tie back into the state level, and use those as a guide in going through this process. To bring land use regulations into compliance with state and federal laws, to ensure that we have legally permissible and defensible policies, physically feasible policies in place, and to protect existing development rights and encourage economic investment in Person County. So this process began back in 2022. The Board of Commissioners voted to enter into a consulting contract with Benchmark in order to put together a Unified Development Ordinance. So looking towards the future, the need was seen to kind of streamline all of those regulations that we have into place, put them into one place that's the go-to, that we can easily monitor and update as needed as we go along, and, and see where changes need to be made to respond to changing circumstances. So we did use a consultant, again, dating back to 2022, that's the time that Chris joined the county in July 22, right when we were kicking this off. And we did have a steering committee that was appointed by the Board of Commissioners to work with the consultants. So they had a series of public meetings to walk through various aspects of all of those ordinances to come up with a draft U D O. This draft implements the 2021 Comprehensive Plan that we've adopted in conjunction with the city, the recommendations and guiding principles of that plan. It updates and amends our land development regulations to be compliant with current state and federal laws, and it pulls the following ten ordinances together. Our planning ordinance, subdivision regulations, minimum construction standards for private roads, falls watershed, stormwater ordinance for new development, limit height of objects around Person County Airport, the mobile home park ordinance, ordinance regulating sexually-oriented businesses, ordinance regulating automobile graveyards and junkyards, solar energy system ordinance, and flood damage prevention ordinance. So as you can see there, there may be one project to which five or six of these apply, and you're cross-referencing all of them as you go through. So again, this pulls it all into, to one document for easy reference and updating. Okay, so the actual steps that got us here, Benchmark worked with the steering committee and reviewed each section of those ten ordinances that I just covered, and put those together, combined those into a new document. So this document reorganized, it put things together, it pulled the definitions together from those various ordinances. We had planning board review, county attorney review, comments were made related to that first document. The planning board at that time wanted to have a very thorough process of their own, rather than taking what had come out of that process with the consultants and the steering committee. So for over a year, the planning board has met twice a month, for the most part, to really delve into all of those individual ten ordinances and see how those mapped back into this final document. So they've had time to really get in-depth into the language of the ordinances, consider how that language and the proposed language meets or does not meet the needs of the county in order to arrive at this draft final document. There was also much opportunity for public participation throughout that process, so meetings were noticed through the Courier Times and through other methods as well. So the public was invited to comment at those meetings on the various sections that were being reviewed, and I know that there was quite a bit of dialogue that was engaged in between the board and the public who attended those meetings, as well as the board members themselves, as they completed this thorough review over the past year. In addition to that, the draft was made available on the county website over that time period for review and comment, and the opportunity to ask questions along the way. So once the U D O is adopted, that final draft will also be made available on the website, and it will replace the ten ordinances that are currently listed there. What this slide recommends is to review and amend it every five years, and we certainly want to ensure that there is a comprehensive review and amendment process at a minimum every five years. But what we also have the opportunity to do is to continuously evaluate how the U D O is working for us in the county, evaluate our changing needs, ensure that the language is such that it does create a process that is easy to understand and follow and administer. And as we go along, we can update language. It would be through a similar process where we would propose, staff would propose, or either a text amendment is requested, and then it goes through a similar process where ultimately it comes to the Board of Commissioners, and we have a public hearing and you consider the text amendment. So I'm not going to go into great detail about what's contained in each article. Everybody's had the document, you've heard this summary before. It is broken into a number of articles. In Article One, it outlines the purpose and authority. One of the aspects of that article is it does list the ten currently adopted ordinances, and that those would be repealed and replaced upon adoption of the consolidated U D O. This does not amend the official zoning map, the adopting the U D O does not amend the zoning map, it does not change zoning for any property or alter existing development rights. It does not amend the comprehensive plan or the future land use map. Ordinance language in certain existing ordinances is mainly intact with just a few clarifications that were recommended by the planning board, and those include the Falls Lake watershed, the flood damage prevention ordinance, the solar energy systems ordinance, airport height and limitations, and adult entertainment. So there were very minor changes made to those. Article Two outlines administration and code enforcement, so it defines staff's roles within the planning and zoning department, and then it outlines what our technical review committee would look like when applicable, and just defines various processes and procedures. Article Three is the review and approval procedures. One thing to note throughout this new document, there have been flow charts that have been added, as well as many graphics, charts, pictorial representations of things that may be encountered, and in an effort to better explain processes and how certain decisions are made. Article Four, zoning districts and uses. So Article Four is the county zoning ordinance. It defines zoning districts and conditional districts and overlay districts, non-conforming uses, and then a variety of other things related to zoning. Article Five, site development standards. Again, we've got the design standards outlined with graphics as examples to help clarify the written language in the ordinance. It provides standards and graphics for a variety of things related to development, such as lights, lots, site design, environmental open space standards, flood plain protection, landscaping, screening, parking ratios, and it addresses legal non-conformities. Article Six is the county's sign ordinance, again with graphics to help explain it. And then we have the appendices. So Appendix A is the permitted use table, so that's easy reference there. Appendix B are the definitions, so we've pulled those terms from all ten ordinances into one spot, so that goes into great detail of various terms located within the U D O. And then Appendix C is a recommended plant list, listing species type and planning criteria as a recommendation only. So that's to help give ideas as far as what would be suitable in our climate and environment here in Person County. So this chart here just kind of maps where you'll find all those ten ordinances in the U D O. So for example, the planning ordinance. Aspects of that planning ordinance are going to be found in all of the sections or all the articles of the U D O. When it comes to the subdivision ordinance, that standalone document is now incorporated mainly into Article Five and the Site Development Standards. Minimum construction standards for private roads, you're also going to find that in Article Five and Site Development Standards. The solar energy system ordinance is in Article Four, and also aspects of that in zoning districts and uses. So this just shows you kind of where all of those individual ordinances found their way into the Unified Development Ordinance, and where they're located. So if the board were to adopt the U D O tonight, following the public hearing, there is a suggested motion there that can refer back to the ordinance that is included in your agenda packet, which would be adopted, and once that ordinance is adopted, then the U D O follows as the, the document that would become effective for planning and zoning purposes going forward. So with that, I know we have some, to hear from some public and have some discussion, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that I can.
Any questions of the manager at this point? No one? Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have public comments in favor of?
Yes, sir, we have one individual.
Okay.
All right. Are we setting a time limit for this public hearing, or?
Normally we do. You only have that one, and then others.
For opposition, we have four.
Well, we'll go with the, with about four minutes each would be good to start with.
Okay, yes, sir. The first speaker we have for in favor of is Jay Jennings. If I can please instruct I T. to set the timer for four minutes.
Thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to speak, staff. First of all, I'd like to commend the planning board for the long and, and burning some tasks that they have worked at to, to. that they have worked at to get to this point. I did tell Michelle when I was signing up that she have a sheet for people for and opposed, and she suggested I just go with the, with the, with being in favor. But I did have some comments at the public hearing for the planning board, and one of the comments was taken into account. There was a provision that recorded, approved plat said thirty days to be recorded, and the planning board didn't see to bring you a change of sixty days. And my rationale there, thinking thirty days was too short, was when you have properties that's being transferred, family property, and you've got family members in different states to circulate deeds, get them to and to and from, a lot of times it'll take time. So sixty days will help in that situation. I was concerned about the family subdivision provision being taken out of the ordinance. I feel a little bit better about that in seeing that there was a change in state law a few years ago. It kind of offers an option for a three-locked subdivision if you have greater than five acres. So I think that'll kind of fill that family subdivision niche a little bit, so hopefully that'll, that will, will work out. One question came up that I did not have for the planning board, and I hate to, hate to bring it up now, and I'm not recommending holding up adoption of this document, but I was glad, glad to hear there's a provision for review and potential future changes. So in case there is some wording that comes out that needs to be changed. In our current subdivision ordinance that was adopted March of eighty-seven, there are nine exclusions to the definition of a subdivision. It's, I couldn't find this through internet search of general statutes, but it was my memory from that time that a local bill was filed on behalf of Person County that changed the definition of a subdivision from the state definition. And I don't know if that needs to be taken into account. Most of those provisions are covered in the wording of the new document, but it doesn't refer to the general statute of a local bill. So that's more of a legal question, I guess, but it references in the subdivision procedures, subdivision defined, Section three point three point one. And then it includes six items that are not included in the definition of a subdivision. Then it goes to a Section C, and it says divisions of land shall be exempt from the subdivision process, and there are four items there. And as I said, most of those items cover the nine, but the wording is just different. And the provision D that's under that three point three category talks about three lots being subdivided from land greater than five acres. And it says a permanent means of ingress and egress is recorded for each lot, but there's really no, no definition given of width of easement. I talked with Granville County because of a client that had a request in Granville, and they don't have a standard. They, they interpret the state law as not, in that provision, not requiring a minimum width. Of course, in this document, we have minor subdivision and major subdivision, and those definitions are included. But thank y'all for your time.
Thank you for your expert testimony. Appreciate what you're saying. Now, the question about the minor, major, could we get, get an interpretation of what that really means? Is it in there stated that way in the UDO as it's written right now?
As far as the easement provision, is that what you?
The width of easement?
Is that what you're?
Well, you mentioned minor and major.
Well, minor and major is defined.
Okay.
And the road, and the road provisions are defined, whether it be, whether it be private or public, public DOT standards, minor subdivision, private road, and it gives the standards for that. But this, this one exemption that is not a subdivision doesn't define a width, so I'm hoping that that'll be interpreted with flexibility going forward.
So that's with the three lots?
Yes, the three. And this is, this is an event that can happen once every ten years. Three lots be subdivided with the parent tract being greater than five acres.
Just so we clear that.
So.
Any comment, Mr. Attorney?
Well, if I could, I mean, you're absolutely right, there's a state exemption for, I mean, you described it really well as it's essentially the family subdivision exemption. And my recollection, I don't have the statute right in front of me, is that that exemption doesn't have a minimum or maximum right-of-way width. It's just if you do this kind of subdivision, it's exempt from county plat, subdivision requirements. So we could take a look at that if you would just reach out to either our clerk or our manager with the specific language and they can take a look. And that's one of the things I'm going to advise the board, is that even though five years is good for sort of the big update, I think as we find things, which we are going to, viewing this as an iterative process, you know, okay, we've got some smaller things we need to update, like definitions, we'll try and do those more frequently than every five years. At least that would be my recommendation.
Well, I appreciate that approach.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you all.
Okay, Madam Clerk, opposed, did you?
All right, opposed, we have four individuals. The first would be Joe Berryhill.
Good evening, Mr.
Evening, sir.
Chairman, members of the board and staff. My name is Joe Berryhill, and this is my brother Cal. And just to give you a brief of history of what, or where we are, we started our RV park in twenty-two. We actually started the process in eighteen. It took us four years to get it going. What, what caused all this? Back in seventeen, Duke had a major outage, and the, and the workers were coming in from, from everywhere, and they had no place to stay. Duke bought buses and they was, they was busting them to the plant to work. And that's all we heard was a Person County has no RV. So, so we, we started an RV park. We got it open in May of twenty-two. We opened with thirty-three lots, and within two weeks we were full. And we've been adding ever since. We have permitted to one oh nine lots, but we presently have eighty-five active lots now. And just to give you a, of a clue of where these people work, a lot of them work for, for Duke at different places. They work at the ash pond, they work in the control room, they're working over here at, at the after bay dam, they redoing that. We got, we got several in there that's working on the gas plant at Morrell. A lot of them have solar panels in Virginia. And we have several traveling nurses in there. A lot of them have worked at Person County, some of them working Durham, Duke, and Durham General. So I hope I have established at one point that there is a need for RV parks. And so when it gets down to these ordinances, the, the, about the first ten that we led in our park, they work for Chara down here at Duke with the ash. But that's a seven-year project. And, and so when we read that, the ordinances, I mean, I have a problem or concern with several of them, but I guess my biggest one is on page twenty-one, line F, where it says they have to vacate in a hundred and eighty days. So these people that, that, that came to us, that, that work for Chara or Duke, either way, like I said, that's a seven-year project. So, I mean, they have nowhere to go. I mean, they're out of town. Some of them have their families here, some of them don't. A lot of them go home on the weekends, or some of them don't. But they have nowhere else to go and work at Duke at the same time. So the, the ordinance that says in a hundred and eighty days they have to get up and leave, number one, I mean, what is that going to accomplish? And a second question, when you say they have to leave, does that mean they have to leave the park, or can they just switch lots? If, if, I mean, that's my biggest concern. On, on page twenty, eleven, that, that, that verbiage there, to me, is not clear. It's on, on line eleven, it says fifty feet. I mean, we have to be fifty feet from your neighbor. And then on page nineteen, they talk about five hundred feet. And to me, that's, I mean, that's not clear. And I, I would like to see that one cleared up. And the other one is on page twenty-two, line eight. It says no assemblies. We built a pool this summer, has a, a pretty nice patio on, on the side of it. We, we kind of had in mind a small assemblies, or something like a birthday party, or, or even a small concert, but, but that ordinance is against that. So those are my three biggest ones. And I guess my last question is, is who's going to regulate all this? I mean, who's going to enforce these ordinances? So I appreciate your time and.
Thank you for your questions, and we'll try to get answers to you. Or do, would you care to respond to those now?
So I, I don't have an answer to the one hundred and eighty-day timeframe and why, the why behind, why that was included. And there may have been discussion at the planning board that I'm not aware of or a reason why. So that's, that's an example of something that in Chris's absence, I'll need to do a little bit of research into, understanding the why behind that.
I mean, what would that, what would that accomplish to move them out in a hundred and eighty days?
I, I, I'm going to echo what the manager said. I wasn't involved in the hearings, and our planning director unfortunately isn't here now, but I can tell you in other jurisdictions where they have a hundred and eighty day limit, what the concern typically is, the concern is that these RV units can become permanent dwellings. So what you don't want to have are permanent water and sewer and electrical hookups to what's essentially temporary housing that's not inspected under the state building code. Now, I don't know if that was the concern here, but that's what we see a lot. But I, I think where you have a specific use, like you're talking about in a pretty specific circumstance, that's the kind of thing where I think it's really helpful for the board to consider, well, do we need a text amendment to try and address that? And I can't say one way or the other, but that, that context you give is very helpful.
So, well, it's open to revision. I mean, it's not going to be a.
It is, and we can look a little more closely at these specific questions and.
I think his question is valid.
Right.
Because we, we know when we get construction in the county, we know what's going on, and we know that they come from out of state a lot of times, so they are in these RV parks. So, and we've heard of two in particular that predict three years of construction, and I think you mentioned the possibility of seven years. So I don't know if somewhere in a text amendment there or adjustment that after a hundred and eighty days or three sixty, whatever you want to do, have an option there to reapply or make a request, but anyway, we could.
Yeah.
But, but again, would they have to move off the site, or can they move to another lot?
That's what we would have to decide. And I mean, it's a good, valid point that I don't think has been, been addressed.
Right, we can certainly look more closely at that. I mean, I agree with the reasoning behind your question and your concern there, so we can definitely look into that. As far as the, the fifty-foot versus the five hundred foot measures, we can look at that and the provision of assemblies, whether that applies within the RV park context. Have to look at that more closely.
I can't at least address the assemblies on the, on the short-term rentals use, because I was looking at that ordinance as you were speaking, sir, and what it says is if you're operating short-term rentals, which are a little bit different than RV parks, you, you can't have the short-term rentals in support of an assembly use. And really, this isn't the only example, but I think of that more like someone who's having concerts or, you know, things where there are large groups of people coming together. So the example of you gave, you know, we have a swimming pool, people might want to come and have a birthday party. I don't think that would be included. Now, I want to give you the caveat, I'm not the planning director, but I, I do think that's the sort of thing that it'd be good if the ordinance is adopted for you to come and talk with planning staff and kind of walk you through. And as the chairman suggested, if it turns out you've got a, you know, a really good usage you're doing that isn't allowed in the UDO, one option is to get a text amendment.
And, and that line eight is under the short-term rental provision, so my understanding of that is that it applies within the definition of short-term rental in the ordinance, which is outside of the RV park. But again, another thing where this document is new to everybody, and we'll have to make sure, you know, at the staff level, that our interpretations are clear and that it's consistent moving forward. And we'll make sure we do look at that one closely to make sure that's clarified.
Okay.
Mr. Berryhill?
Thank you all for your time.
Mr. Berryhill, I've been in contact with Duke Energy employees, management, and Chara workers. They've had to stall and redo part of the work they did, so the projected timeframe now is ten instead of seven.
And that's at Mayo?
Sir?
That's at Mayo Plant?
That's between the two of them. I don't really know how they're transporting and.
The, the heckle, a plant is projected in fifteen years. On, on that ash removal and I think they had to build new ponds. I'm not talking about the construction of the new gas plant.
Right, right.
And that's the, I mean, I mean, we got growth coming, and where is the people, I mean, it's not enough people in Person County to build, to build the, the gas plant in Morrell that work on Duke and the mega plant. So, and so these people need a place to stay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work on it.
Okay.
Appreciate your input.
Thank you, Mr. Berryhill.
Madam, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir, the next speaker is Julie Mayby.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Come to speak on my own behalf, ten thirty-seven Younger Road, and I've been a public servant since nineteen eighty-four. I've worked as planning director, code enforcement officer, billing inspector, and I plead with you to table adoption of this ordinance. Um, and the reason I say that, at this time, additional vetting needs to be done. Uh, as illustrated by Mr. Berryhill, some provisions are a little bit confusing and hard to understand. And as a staff person trying to enforce that, that's going to be very difficult. I commend the planning board and the county commissioners for initiating this process. It's been needed for a long time in consolidating these ordinances. But we need to just step back and make sure things are consistent. And just to give you an illustration, um, in the section Mr. Berryhill was referencing about, uh, RV, um, parks, it prohibits cabins. Why? That could possibly be a solu-
Pro- prohibits?
Cabins.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I mean, that could be actually an illustration of something like that. And then when we get to short-term rentals, uh, speaking from the Tourism Development Authority standpoint, that represents about thirty-eight percent of our revenue that comes in. And it talks about, um, you need to have an active zoning permit. What's an active zoning permit? What's an inactive zoning permit? And so, um, and if you don't have one, and you don't get one, they can withhold issuance. How long? At least a year? So, why is this different from anything else? There just needs to be consistency and enforcement of it. Again, I commend the planning board for, for this work, but I plead with you all to take into consideration the inconsistencies in the ordinance. We want it to succeed. We want to, we need to get together and work on this further. And then looking at, too, the vacancy in the planning director position. Need to get it off on the right foot. Um, that's really important to have something. I stopped by the planning department today, and I said, if the ordinance is adopted tonight, do you have a zoning permit application? They don't. Well, they would see what had happened. But what if somebody walks in the door and wants to get a permit? What do you tell them? Who's going to explain it to them? That's all I'd like to just mention. We want things to be consistent and fair to everybody. And you need to have the provisions in place. And I'll raise one other question about talking about existing development. How's that determined? My understanding, years ago, permitting system was hacked, and a lot of data was lost. So, something to think about. And that's, that's really what I have to say about that. Again, thank you for all you're doing, and I say this with just the best intent and wants this to be done, done right. And whoever your new planning director is, let them have some input in it. I'd also recommend, at different planning board meetings, as I've done in the past, I recommend that you have your attorney present at those meetings. It really does help a lot. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, we have is Scott McKinney.
Good evening, everyone. Say, hear, hear to all those comments that precede me tonight, uh, in full agreement with all those and the spirit with which they were, were given to you folks. Uh, I have, I had the opportunity while serving on your Economic Development Commission and also the affiliated nonprofit PCBIC to, to really dig into the past about economic development activity here in the county. So, I'm coming to you tonight, not representing those entities, but just knowing that that knowledge base has been developed to some extent. And so, that's why I'm making these comments. Several years ago, PCBIC, the nonprofit entity that supports economic development in Person County, secured property on Woodsdale Road in response to needs expressed by industry for a transloading facility. Such a facility would support the flow of raw materials and finished products utilizing rail and trucks. Although the facility has not yet come to fruition, it is still needed by existing industry and would be attractive to prospects. Industry officials have expressed recently this to elected officials and others involved in promoting economic development in Person County. In the UDO Appendix A that you have before you tonight, the permitted use table, uh, labeled A5, uh, three lines in there are maybe relevant or applicable to a transloading facility if, if such, uh, a beast was presented to the planning department. Uh, the best, most potentially relevant use, I believe, is the one that's labeled bus slash train slash transit terminal repair or hauling yard. Uh, and that is permitted in RD and GI zones. This use is, is defined further in the UDO PDF Appendix B, labeled B twelve. Uh, and that definition specifically is a facility at the terminus of a form of mass transportation where buses, trains, or similar vehicles are parked, stored, and/or repaired. So, that's pretty specific. Although this definition seems to contemplate a transloading in its facility with the use of the word hauling yard, the definition is not expansive enough to provide assurance that a transloading facility is allowed. It refers to vehicle parking, storage, and repair, and does not mention at all the transloading of freight, uh, which I would add is currently an allowed use under our existing ordinances. Um, the definition, and it is specifically listed that way in the existing ordinances, uh, the definition should include specific language indicating a transloading facility is an allowed use. That's my opinion. Uh, my recommendation to you folks is that, uh, you amend that definition to specifically include language indicating a transloading facility is an allowed use, just like the current ordinances have specifically stated. Uh, there are a couple of other potentially relevant uses. One is labeled truck terminal repair or hauling yard. Again, that term hauling yard. Uh, that's only permitted in GI. Uh, that definition is a facility where trucks of all sizes and make are stored, repaired, or hauled for repair. That's not movement of freight, that's hauling in the physical truck. Again, so that's, that's not, um, broad enough to contemplate a transloading facility where there would be transloading of freight between trucks and rails. However, since that use is limited to GI, uh, there might not be much value in altering that specific definition. It serves a very valid purpose of limiting concentrated trucking activity to the GI zone. Fine. Uh, the other potentially relevant use is one called outdoor slash open storage, which is permitted in RD, NC, HC, and GI zones. Uh, that use is defined further in Appendix B, B thirty-six. And that definition says, "Any area which contains outdoor storage of bulk materials and/or parts, or areas regularly used for outdoor repair areas or service stations, but excluding temporary construction and related activities in closed bay docks." This definition may be relevant and come into play if a transloading facility was ever proposed, uh, because outdoor storage and open storage may be required to facilitate customer needs by offering a full suite of services. Uh, the use is not expansive enough by itself to provide assurance that a transloading facility is allowed. Uh, but it clearly does support the concept of outdoor open storage. Appreciate you hearing my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last speaker we have is Tabitha George.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm, I'm here because I'm concerned that the UDO that is in the agenda packet does not accurately reflect, um, the consensus and intent of the planning board. And of course, the planning board is advisory only. It's completely up to the commissioners. Whatever you decide is what the document will be. Um, I think it is important to know what was, some of the things that were discussed and recommended that don't appear to have made it into the document that is in the packet. Um, so first, um, heavy industrial buffers, um, page five dash fifty-nine, section five point four point four, buffer yards table five dash five. Um, the consultant recommended decreasing the buffer yard for heavy industrial down to only twenty feet from our current standard of a hundred and fifty feet. And it was the consensus of the board to retain the current buffering in its form. Wanted to point that out. Um, also, the second thing, driveway section five point five point nine, page five sixty-nine. Um, as background elsewhere in the UDO, the minimum lot width for parcels is a hundred foot. Um, but in what was received from the consultant, the driveways were limited to one driveway per three hundred feet of roadway. Um, and I think you can see a problem in that. And it was recog- in the last meeting, we re- recommended removing the restrictions on the number of driveways and the separation distance in the motion to approve the UDO. And that doesn't seem to have made it fully into the document that's in the packet. Um, it seems to have been partially addressed for businesses, but was not addressed for residential or agricultural uses. Um, the third thing, page eight dash eighteen, definition of dwelling, single-family detached. Um, the board had recommended, at least twice, removing the limitation of one building per lot to be consistent with current practices, so as not to create a hardship for residents who are living together in the same parcel on family lands. Um, the fourth thing, um, residential yards and plant installation standards. Sections, um, for residential yards and plant installation standards, at some point were combined, making it appear that plant installation standards only apply to residential yards and not to situations such as industrial buffer yards. Um, it's the way it was mushed together. And we had recommended putting that back into two sections. So, it's clear that the installation standards would apply to all required plantings, um, as they were in like the first iteration of the document that we had received before they were combined. Um, also, there has been some discussion about the recommended plant list. In the ordinance, um, the board had asked that it would be optional. Um, but in section five point four point eight point C, it is stated as required using the term shall instead of may or is encouraged. The only proposed alternative which shall be used as an alternative is a list of plants titled drought tolerant plants. Um, Person County's diverse, they have a diverse topography. And not all places in the county will be able to grow trees and plants that are drought resistant. Some of them will need to be more wetland friendly. Um, so, I would recommend, as had been discussed, that the recommended plant list should really be recommended. It should be a may or is an encouraged, not a shall be. Um, and I'm just here because I was concerned that many of those things would create hardships for residents of the county and also to clarify some of the discussions that had been had that didn't seem to make it into the document. And that's, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes all speakers for in favor of and in opposition of this public hearing.
Thank you, ma'am. So, at this time, if we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So, move.
A motion on the floor. Any further comments or questions? If you're none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carried. Item number three is to consider, consideration to grant or deny. Before we do that, it's okay if I or we make a comment or two at this point.
I, I would encourage the board to have discussion at this point, sir.
At this point. First and foremost, uh, I want to echo some comments earlier about, uh, what Planning and Zoning has done. And I've sat in on some of their meetings, but not all of their meetings. And they have worked extremely hard for a long, long time and some very long, lengthy meetings, uh, going over this document, line by line, and sometimes even word by word, as we just witnessed. Uh, so, my kudos to you all for what you've done. I know it, it's, um, it's been laborious, and, and I appreciate it very much. Early on, the, the question was asked about when the commissioners would like to see this document done. I commented to them then, as well as now, not until it's ready. Uh, there's no rush. There's never been any push by this board to get this done by any particular date. So, uh, time was not, uh, of the essence. Uh, time needed, there was just at your discretion. But, uh, you've worked extremely hard. And when we have questions like we're having, it's only because it has come to light through, uh, our board members and, and staff and public that have, that have legitimate questions. And, uh, and it's nothing against, um, Mr. Chairman Walker and his, um, board, not at all. But, uh, it's, these questions have surfaced, and, um, and we need to address those to the best of our ability. Will it be a perfect document when it's voted on? No, uh, it will never be. But it's always revivable and, um, or revisions could come about. So, I have no problem with that. And, uh, I don't know if you'd interest, you'd like to comment at this point?
I just would like to say, Mr. Chair, that, um, first of all, I thank everyone who spoke up today and gave us your concerns. Um, I've heard concerns throughout, since our last meeting, from different, uh, citizens who had concerns about UDO. And I think that, um, uh, again, all the hard work that I know was put into this and the long hours, um, and, um, you know, it's just not going to be perfect. But at the same time, we have citizens that are concerned and have, uh, questions about the UDO. And then it's, it's very, uh, I understand the understanding of the times. We don't have a zoning planning director. And so, uh, the expert, if you will, that you go to, uh, with these issues. So, I, I am concerned about the RVs and the, uh, and places for the, um, workers that are going to be coming for economic, our economic development, our, um, plants and things that are being built. So, where are they going to stay? Housing is very important. And, um, this certainly is, um, beneficial to them who are coming here to work, who don't live here, but are going to be here for quite a while. And I think we, uh, it's one of the things that we have is a shortage of these facilities to accommodate the people we're going to have coming with all the construction and building that's going to be happening over the next several years. And, uh, we are growing, it is coming, said this before. And I think that, um, we need to really look at this and look at what we can do to make it easier for us to have, um, places, housing, RV parks, or whatever, for our construction workers to come here and work. One thing it is, we talk about economic development. If these construction workers or the people working on these projects, if they're not staying here in Person County, where are they going? Caswell, Granville? Where's the money going? Where's the, where's, where they're going to be spending money in our shops, in our local, uh, merchants? You know, that's money that could be staying here if they're in our county. And I think it's very important that we try to provide, uh, that situation where we have places for them to stay and where they can stay here in Person County and shop in our shops, eat at our restaurants, and be here in our county. So, uh, that's just my thoughts on that, uh, at this time. And again, some of the things that were mentioned here were some of the things that I was looking at, and I appreciate you all bringing them up, so.
I've spent six hours so far reviewing four hundred pages, or six hundred involved there. It is racking my brain because it is, it's really, really, really confusing. I had eleven items I was going to mention tonight, but I'm just going to use three for eleven concerns. Article four RV parks ask for a five hundred feet setback from any property line. Five hundred feet. That'll take you down to the other side of the Beadle Baptist Building. And then, uh, that's a long ways, that's a lot of wasted property that could be used for several more RVs. That's just tip of iceberg. Number ten on my list, Article four RV parks are being asked to provide a pump and haul when they already have sewer and septic. Excuse me. I only got a twelfth-grade education, but I've got a whole lot of common sense. If you already got an approved and use of septic, why would you want to pump it into a tank and then haul it across the roadways? Easements, residential increase from twenty-five feet in the current ordinance to fifty feet in the new ordinance. This is very excessive when you only need twelve-foot wide driveway. I could go on and on, but you got the gist of my thoughts. And I'll leave it right there.
What's that?
Well, go ahead, sir.
Um, I'm in full agreement, and I would just echo what some of my fellow commissioners already said. Thank you, planning board, for putting your heart
Thank you, Planting Board, for putting your heart, time and work into this. I realize there was a lot of planning. A lot of your time was dedicated to this, to this project. And, and not saying that anything was taken for granted, but I do want to thank the Planting Board and all those involved in the last two years for getting this to us. This is a very fluid document. And I think the chairman is right. There is not a timetable that has to be done, that has to be completed by. We want to make sure that it's done right. The part regarding the family subdivisions as well as the, as well as who's going to enforce it, prohibiting cabins and the 180 days, that really needs to be looked into. And we're at a disadvantage right now because we do not have a planning director in place right now. When you do it, when you approve it, when we, like I said, it's probably not going to make everyone happy, but we want to try to get it to where it's, everybody's comfortable with it. You know, and I think the part that more construction workers will be coming here, that is a fact. It is going to happen. And do we want them to spend their money in Person County or do we want them to go elsewhere? You know, campgrounds, RV parks, it's going to be in demand very soon. And this board has to look at making sure it's done right, but not add restrictive red tape to making those projects viable for people who want, want to go in that business or already have that business. I can speak to the Berryhill family. I remember 2017 when you came in and it was a 401 vote and, and you said one thing. You said you go make sure, if we're going to do it, we're going to do, make sure it's done right. And, and I think other business owners, other family members that want to partake into that business, we make sure it's done right, but we want to make sure that we're not just putting restricted red tape over it. So I would be for tabling this until we do have a planning director in place and get her, his or her impact input on it. And, and slowly go to the process to make sure that we're not making any unintended consequences by rushing something through.
I'm just going to echo what everyone else has said. I mean, I think this needs to be tabled. Take it, take, take it on, you know, you put a lot of hard work into getting this to us and we understand that. But now it's just time to find comment and get it, get it as close as perfect as we can get it. I'm not, like I said, not going to make everyone happy, well, you know that by now. But the, like you said, the 500 feet, I mean, that's excessive to me. We have, like you said, we have so many of these construction companies and plans coming in. We need to make it a place, we need to have a place where it's easier for, for them to have a place to stay. Not so much restrictions behind all this stuff. The 180 day limit, I mean, that's, that's something I'm not in favor for either. And another one up here where it's, the zoning permits for boat docks, I mean, that's Duke Energy. I don't understand. The Lake Authority has that. I don't understand why the zoning, zoning will be over that when it's the Lake Authority since it's Duke Energy's property. I didn't understand that. But like I said, it's just going to take time. We need to really look through this. And I'm not, like I said, I'm not in favor for voting for it.
At this point, and again, we've heard some of these comments and both Berryhills are here, appreciate what you've done. That park is kind of the model of what one should be. And it was done right by the policy and procedures when it was done. So all of these questions are coming up after the fact. So again, I commend you for doing your homework, going through all the hoops and the processes, the government red tape, whatever it may be, to make your park what it is. And so your concerns are legitimate there and certainly to be addressed. A couple of other things that, short-term rentals seem to be high on the list of concerns. And I don't know enough about this to really comment. But who monitors? Who enforces? I guess it would be a complaint-driven document if it were related to some complaints. You know, I, I really don't know. There, there are lots of questions there. And the majority of those are in the Hiker Lake area. There are some others in the county, but around the lake is the primary location for the SGRs. And to me, there, there are a lot of unanswered questions there. And I, I simply do not know how you would go about, number one, identifying them all. I guess it goes back to the person and whether they have the desire to do things right or they, they're going to try to fly under radar and circumvent canned rules and regulations. So I, I think there is, there's definitely, that's a market. And it's identified by, it's maybe 40% of your revenue is based on income from, from those. That's, that's nearly a, very simple math, nearly half of your revenues. And that's a great concern. The other that no one has mentioned tonight has been brought to my attention and that's the one about, I don't know if the term is gaming? Is it video poker? What, what is the legal term for that?
It's a slippery slope. Gaming industry changes the name every few weeks.
Yep.
Gaming is one. Also sweepstakes or internet cafes. There, there are different terms and different uses out there.
Okay, well, that one has come up and in some feel it's a legit business. I think the city has addressed this at one point. Do you know exactly what the city did?
I do not know exactly what the city did. My understanding is they're prohibited within the city limits. So there has been some interest in opening them in the county. In the UDO, that is not, internet cafes are not a permitted use in the draft UDO. So that would mean no internet cafes in the county nor the city. So that's what is in the recommended document. Again, something for the commissioners to consider whether or not that's something you would want to see as a permitted use.
Legislation talk has been going around Raleigh for some time that related to that. They haven't acted. I think maybe not before the end of this session, but I think the long session it, it will. What happens if the state approves gaming or internet cafes or whatever you want to call them?
It's been in the courts off and on and I'll go back there candidly, Mr. Chairman. You're right, the legislature has been regulating gambling and gaming for many years. And it's, it's kind of a cat and mouse game because often, you know, they'll have a definition and then folks who run the industry will find ways around that, that they'll have a new legal use. So trying to get something that really addresses it. And generally, the legislature is criminalizing the activity. What some local governments do is they also have zoning land use restrictions and the two are a little bit separate. So when, you know, we hear that, you know, jurisdiction shut down all of them, it's because some of those uses were unlawful. Those are the ones that, you know, the sheriffs or police departments will be shutting down. But the county, and this is what the UDO does, can regulate the, the uses of land use under civil authority.
Yeah, okay. So the city pushed it into the county, threw it in this board's lap, so to speak. What would happen if someone is already in the process of establishing a business of this type?
It really depends on where they are. So if they're just sort of thinking about it and the county were to prohibit the use, then I think they're out of luck. If they walk in tomorrow to the county office and, you know, make an application to get a permit, then they have what's called permit choice, which means even before the permit's approved, if we were to amend the ordinance after they've submitted the application, they have a right to have their permit processed under the laws that stands at the date they apply. So if someone applies at that point, I think they'd have a right to apply. And then, you know, we prohibit the use, well, they'd be a lawful nonconformity at that point.
So then the opposite side of the coin, if someone is already in the process, then...
Well, but again, Mr. Chairman, suppose where they are in the process is they're thinking about buying the land or they're thinking about bank loans and things like that. They haven't applied for a permit, then from our perspective, I, I don't think that permit choice rule would apply to them.
But if it has, then...
Yes, sir.
It's permissible.
Yes, sir. I mean, they'd be allowed to proceed.
Okay, those, those were the two that I had heard the most about that hasn't been addressed yet already. I don't know if anyone else has heard of those concerns. Okay. All right, getting back to the agenda then. Item number three would be consideration to grant or deny approval of text amendment T 80124 to adopt Person County Unified Development Ordinance or UDO. Do we have a motion of sorts regarding this?
Close the public.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Please. Close the public hearing.
Oh, yes, we did.
It's been closed, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we did that. Thanks.
I got artillery ears, I'm sorry.
We are on the right track here then. So we need a motion regarding approval of this plan is...
Chairman, I will make a motion to table this until 30 days after the hiring of the new planning director. And then whether, and then have a work session with, with the board to address this. It would give the planning director time to become acquainted with her staff and, and but I do think the planning director, it is necessary for the planning director to, to review this and we have that, we have that, that person's input as well on it.
So your motion says 30 days after the hiring?
After the hiring.
How, where are we in that process?
We do have interviews scheduled for Friday, so hopefully it's not going to be a long process. Hopefully, we will be able to select someone from that group. So I would also offer for your consideration whether you would like for, in the meantime, as we're going through a hiring process, and I don't know how much notice the selected candidate might have to give, that I could work with staff to go ahead and take a look at some of the specific questions that have come up tonight. And we could come back kind of in little, maybe mini sessions at your regular meeting to just go into a little more detail about some of the provisions, answer some questions, get some feedback from you all so that that can feed into a more comprehensive review later on, but not completely table it until the time that a new director is here. Go ahead and do some work in the meantime to get us closer to being able to have a finalized document.
I think that's very advisable. We don't need to sit around after the effort and time that Planting and Zoning has put into it. We don't need to sit around and twiddle our thumbs and do nothing. So I think it'd be advisable to start that process immediately and which would, would be a good start for the new person, whomever that may be, that hear the suggested changes or concerns and go forward with that. See everybody that... Could you condense that motion?
Applicants, locals?
I can't discuss the application process.
So I hope we don't get another hopper.
Okay, the condensed version of that motion then?
Condensed version is we can receive feedback and information from the county manager and staff on that during the process, but it is not to be officially considered for a vote until 30 days after the hiring of the planning director on that. To have us have a full work session with the new planning director, but also receive input in the meantime.
Okay, just a what if, not, your motion is fine, but a what if? What if you run across the right person and they can come to work in 15 days?
Then they're here sooner than 30 day, and then the 30 days would start. I just, there's no guarantee as far as when that will happen. But yes, in an ideal situation, maybe that's in a few weeks and then starts the clock.
Everybody clear on the motion?
Yep.
No further questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carried. At this time, in our meeting, we have informal comment period of 10 minutes set aside to hear from citizens in the county concerning issues that they deem important. So at this time, we will honor those. Clarion, how many do we do have?
We have one individual.
One individual and we have a 10-minute period, so.
All right. The first speaker we had is Andrea Childers. If I can ask IT to please set the timer for 10 minutes.
First of all, I'd like to say it's very interesting how the rules of these public hearings seem to vary from subject to subject. Good evening. My name is Andrea Childers. As of Thanksgiving Day, I will have been a resident of Person County for 32 years. At the last meeting, Brandy Lynch made a flippant remark about the blasting of bedrock is the reason our town is named Roxborough. If I had a dollar every time this past year I have heard this trope, I would have enough money to move away from the Mariah Energy Center. Unfortunately, that's not the case. And instead, I get to live in a house that literally shakes when that blasting of bedrock takes place. Remarks like this from our town leaders are only funny for the people who do not have to live it on a daily basis. On September 16th, a pipeline in Deer Park, Texas exploded. That pipeline spewed toxic chemicals and black soot into the air for four days. Accidents like this happen all too often around our country. It is the reason on November 6th, 2023, myself and others asked this board and Dominion, what are the emergency preparedness and the emergency management plans for this site? 11 months, 11 months, we have been asking this question and we still do not have an answer to it. This rural area and most of our neighbors have zero cell service, zero cell service. If the electricity and the internet go out, how will these people know what to do if there's an accident at this facility? I know we're being told everything is being done to mitigate accidents, but the risk is very real. These are the reasons they're called accidents and not on purposes. Accidents are also the reason it is vital we have air monitors in this area. We need to know what is in the actual air that we are breathing and not just what Dominion predicts will be in the air that we are breathing. On a side note, I'm sorry I missed the road closure meeting. However, I did watch it. It was then I realized our Person County commissioners, who are elected by the citizens to represent us in important decisions like road closures, bringing new industries, are not being included in this very important process. From what I heard at that meeting, there were four people who were included on this process. It is because of this, I implore each of you commissioners, each one of you, to not vote on anything until you have all the facts presented to you. Only one of those four people is an actual county commissioner, an actual elected official. That, commissioners, sound an awful lot like a dictatorship. That, commissioners, sound an awful lot like a dictatorship to me.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes our informal comment period.
Next item on the agenda is item number four, discussion adjustment, adjustment approval of the consent agenda as presented. Do we have a motion for approval?
So, Mr. Chairman, though?
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. New business, item number five, Person County Tourism Development Authority, Ms. Mayby.
Good evening. Yeah, just checking, did you all get a copy of our annual report and your agenda? Um, very pleased to present our annual report. Again, the Person County Tourism Development Authority is committed to promoting growth of responsible tourism through marketing strategies and programs that balance economic growth and the need to preserve the natural and cultural heritage of Roxspur and Person County. Our team is dedicated to going above and beyond to meet the needs of our tourism partners, attractions and businesses, and to assist them in promoting their events, to encourage visitors, uh, to visit. Um, and just to let you know, visitor spending within Roxspur and Person County has increased six point six percent to fifty-five point two million dollars. The total amount of payroll that was generated from that investment was eleven point two million. In Person County, three hundred and fourteen people are employed in the tourism sector. Um, with the grant monies or the occupancy taxes that were collected, again, the Tourism Development Authority is not supported by taxpayers, it's through occupancy tax collected. And we awarded, uh, the Person County Tourism Development Board awarded a hundred and twenty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars in grants to local tourist attractions and events. And again, this is why it is so important on short-term rentals, um, where that represents a great percentage of our income. We put back into the community and I included and highlighted in the report just some examples of things that were supported by the Person County Tourism Development Authority, such as the tenth anniversary give back celebration by the Person Veterans Council, uh, the Hawkins Luke Bird Festival, uh, the Flemwood Beach Festival, um, Person County Friends of the Park, um, Person County Little League, um, Person County, um, Museum of History, and that was the R.P. Brooks reopening of the, the store. Um, sponsors for the Rocks and Roll Cruisin' also helped with the Chamber of Commerce Person LA Festival that's coming up, uh, this month, so please attend that. Um, and many other festivals, including the Roxspur Willow Oaks Festival and, uh, many events through, uh, Person County Arts, Parks Department. And again, we're here to advocate for Person County. And that is, I'd like to thank, uh, the two thousand twenty-four board, uh, consisting of Dr. Claudia Berryhill, who's the chair, Beeran Patel, who's our vice chair, Jeremy Buchanan, Herman Gentry, Sally Humphries and Margaret McMahon. Without their guidance and assistance, so we couldn't do the job that we do. And also, I would be remiss in not mentioning that Katie Ann Brandt, she's our Assistant Director of Marketing and Communication. She does a wonderful job in getting the word out. And, uh, check out our new website, um, it's better in person, worked with Simple View. And, uh, Katie Ann's done a wonderful job with that and bringing more information out and to the public. Some of the projects that we've worked on, uh, recently, the, um, uh, the Person County Tourism Development Board, and that was through the input of many of our tourism partners, approved a master plan for wayfinding signage, and we should see that going up, uh, within this next year. Uh, we've already applied through our permits with, uh, N C D O T, so, thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for...
Consider everything y'all doing.
Thank you. Very good job. Item number six on the agenda is appointments to, appointments to boards and committees, uh, Ms. Shawley.
Yes, sir, good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I would like to present citizen applications for current vacancies, for nominations as the board deems appropriate. In your packet, you do have a list of committees and applicants. The first one we'll go through is the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. So we do have, um, citizens at large positions available, as well as a juvenile defense attorney. We did receive three applications, all of these are for citizen at large. The first, Maria Elixon, the second one, Letitia Lindsay, and the third, Melissa Paget. May I please ask the desire of the board?
Promotion?
And it's two spots available?
There are four citizen, yes.
So all three can go in?
That is correct, if you choose to.
Motion to, motion to appoint all three.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, any further discussion or comment? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried.
Thank you, the next one is for Piedmont Community College Board of Trustees. We have one position available to fill an unexpired term through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-eight. We did receive two applications, the first, Philip Allen, the second, Allison Stevens. May I please ask the desire of the board?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Allen, he's got experience.
We have, um, motion on the floor, any further discussions or nominations? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried.
Thank you, the next one we have is the Rec Advisory Board. We have one position available to fill an unexpired term to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Katie Ann Brandt requests appointment.
Motion to approv, approve Katie Ann Brandt?
Motion for approval of Ms. Brandt, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, as far as, uh, updates from, from me, I, I did, uh, routine the normal attendance of, uh, various committees and functions throughout the county during the month. I won't go into detail on those there, my assignments, and try to do my job. Kathy?
Okay, to provide an update on the closure of a portion of Country Club Road, that does go into effect tomorrow, and we have had LED signage up, um, since last week on either side of the closure. Tomorrow morning, um, we do have a contractor who will begin constructing the turnaround, and there will be D O T signage installed, um, prior to that, to direct traffic to alternative routes. So all of that, um, is in place to begin tomorrow morning.
Thank you, Commissioner Sims?
Yes, uh, first of all, again, I want to thank Speaker for, uh, safe haven tonight, for speaking to us. And, um, one thing she didn't mention that I would like just to mention here is that, um, they'll be hosting our, their Domestic Violence Awareness Month kickoff on October night, twenty twenty-four, beginning at nine AM at the Piedmont Community College, Room S ten. And I'll probably be speaking there at that event, so, uh, hopefully you can come out and support, uh, those who are, um, fighting for, uh, against domestic violence, so appreciate it, that's all.
Mr. Palmer?
I'm proud to say that I helped with the relief efforts in the mountains. I won't disclose how much I put into this, but it was a pretty substantial amount of money and provisions. I think I caught, heard, I heard word it was six or either eight tractor trailer loads of that Person County going to the mountains. If I'm correct, it was one or the other. I did attend Relay for Life briefly, um, as I had my dog with me, so I couldn't really get on the field and engage with so many people. But, um, it was a huge, huge event, a lot of people was here, um, they were busting them in from ar- different areas and, it, it turned out nice.
Mr. Berry, here?
No report.
Mr. Thomas?
I'd just like, like to tell, uh, everyone that has come out for the, uh, the relief effort since last Friday, been helping with this. Um, and we, we talked about it yesterday, we went, we actually went to the mountains yesterday. Um, we took, uh, three tractor trailers loads yesterday. Uh, we went up to, uh, Old Fort, we went up to, um, Chimney Rock and Mattis, Mattis. Uh, it's very humbling, um, going up there and, and talking with these people that have lost absolutely everything. And when I say everything, it's hard to wrap your brain around everything, but we were, when I say everything, we were walking on mud. And that was, used to be a bustling town with pavement and, and stores, but they were completely just washed off the map. I will, I will never forget that trip yesterday. Uh, and to your answer, it, we have sent nine as of last Friday. Um, and that's with the, the help with, um, the Sheriff's Department, uh, Brands, Brandon's Worker Service, uh, Kendricks, I don't want to leave anyone out, um, D Y W. It's been so many groups, uh, Person Industries, it's been so many groups that have, have stepped up to the plate. And when you work the trailers and you see all the people in the county come and they're giving their heart and, and they're telling you about, you know, they just want to do something, want to give, you know, they feel so bad seeing the devastation and they, all they want to do is just help. And that's all we're trying to do is just help. Um, but the people in the mountains of North Carolina right now, the one thing they need are prayers. Um, the, the, the distribution centers are, 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 they're, they're, they're stocked pretty well right now. Um, one thing that they told us yesterday, that, um, even though they was slammed yesterday, he said by Wednesday, they'll probably be back to where they need stuff again. But they haven't, you, so you take your stuff to the distribution center and they have these small groups come in and pick them, pick up the, the product and take it out to the areas where the people cannot come to, uh, get the product. So it's a total team effort. Uh, you fill that team camaraderie when you're in that area. Um, but like I said, right now, what they need the most are prayers because they, they're starting all over. And that really sits, it, it sits with you. But I want to thank everyone for coming out since last Friday and helping us with all the relief effort.
I think all of that speaks well of Person County, yes.
Could I add something? I really appreciate what you just shared, Commissioner Thomas, and all the efforts that everyone in the community has put into donating and also of volunteering of their time here and in going to the western part of the state. I do want to mention, on the consent agenda tonight, y'all approved an update to our statewide mutual aid agreement, which is currently in place, those were just some minor revisions. So as part of that statewide mutual aid agreement, as the county workforce, we have sent employees, um, to assist. So we've had employees from our sheriff's office go, from emergency services, the health department, our G I S director is currently there to support technology, I T has gone. Um, we'll be sending inspections, staff and others as the needs continue to evolve, and we can continue to support those efforts. So, um, as an organization, we're, we are also pitching in in that way, and, um, I just appreciate everyone's time and effort in being able to help.
Okay. Uh, at this time, we do need to, uh, have a motion to go into close session, but to add the personnel issue there that, uh, we need to discuss, we just tack that on?
We just need to add that Bonnie and Janet can attend, is that, that was the one change that we had, right?
Close session number one was to include Bonnie Holt and Jenically.
Yes, got that, got that.
And then close session number two is to discuss personnel, so that's already on the agenda.
All, we're all clear then, yeah, right there to bottom, okay, we're clear. So do we have a motion to go into close session?
So moved.
Motion on the floor to go into close session and discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. We'll take.
There is no further official business for this board tonight. I would take a motion to adjourn.
So do we.
Motion to adjourn. Any discussion here or none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.